I'd like to call to order the July meeting of the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees, and we're going to begin this evening by going around and introducing ourselves and sharing something we're reading if you would care to do so. Fred, how about we start with you?
Hi, I'm Fred Rysinger. I just returned the book that I had checked out for about two weeks unused. It's called The Cook You Want to Be, and had some great recipes, and I do about, I don't know, 40% of our cooking. And I made some things from it. Turned out real well.
I'm Jamie Burkhart, and I am starting a new book, The Feather Thief. So it's one that was on the high school read list for honors kids, so I got a kid at home reading it, so I'm gonna read it, too.
I'm Greer Carson. I'm rereading Jared Diamond's Collapse: How Societies Choose to Fail or Succeed. And to balance the morale in the house, my family is playing Planet Coaster, which is a game where you build your own amusement park, and then you have to staff it, and you have to maintain your revenue. And it's quite an interesting experience, particularly when I'm the worst designer in the house.
I'm Chris Harrison, and I am currently reading a book called Storm by Nicola Skinner.
I'm David Ferguson, and I just finished Longitude, which was, I guess, a history of how they finally figured out to calculate where they were on the high seas.
Nichelle Wash, and I am reading Two Things. One, Leading with Cultural Intelligence by David Livermore, and just a fun read, which is actually kind of sad, is Finding Me, Viola Davis's memoir. It's really good. She narrates it herself on audiobook if you would like to listen.
Okay, first on the agenda are the Consent Agenda items, including the minutes of the January 15th Board meeting, the monthly financial report, the monthly bills for payment, the personnel reports, and the 2022 Board Meeting calendar. Do I have a motion to accept these Consent Agenda items?
So moved.
Are there any questions or points of discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the Consent Agenda items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Next, we'll move on to the Director's Monthly Report from Greer.
So a few highlights to share with everyone. We had nearly 4,000-page views of our recently digitized school yearbook collection, which had recently launched, and nearly 7,000-page views for our staff picks book list, which is up almost 30% from last month. This is most likely due to the popularity of the summer reading program and the recommendations for that. We've seen a steady increase in overall collection use for the third straight month, and a continued increase in monthly collection use compared to 2021 month by month. We were very excited to reintroduce the Fix-It Fair after a two-year hiatus, and we saw very good turnout for that. We hosted a number of programs in June celebrating Pride Month, as we do every year. Our foundation, the Friends of the Library, held its annual meeting on June 22nd. This was the first in-person meeting they had had since the start of the pandemic. We had a wonderful turnout and engaging presentation by biographer and MCL friend Michael Sheldon. Of course, we pride ourselves on connecting with Monroe County teens in as many ways as we can, and there are a number of really cool anecdotes from the ground floor and teen space patrons in the report this month, my favorite being one from our Know Your Glow Dance. You may have noticed, the quote was, "This was the best night of my life." And I read that, and I thought, how often do you hear library patrons, and teen patrons in particular, say something like that with regard to a library program? This is not in the Director's Report, but an update on our work with our potential partners at Health Net. We are working on an updated lease for use of the downtown library space to provide their community health service, and it's nearing completion. So we do expect to bring that back, if not in August, certainly by September, so we can move forward with that partnership. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Anything for Greer?
I'd just like to comment that my daughter attended the Know Your Glow Dance, and just thought it was a great thing. I mean, it was a really amazing event for kids and teens.
Yeah, our folks are very, very excited and very happy with the way it turned out, so.
Okay, next we'll move on to old business, and the first item is a Southwest Branch update.
All right, so Jamie stole my thunder, and I was just gonna say it's starting to look like a real building, but it is. If you've driven by the site, you're gonna see lots of steel in addition to the concrete that's been there for a while, so we continue to go vertical. It really is starting to look like a building. You can kind of get the outline of the structure now, which is great. All the utility easements are finally completed, and so excavation for site utilities has begun. So I'm gonna remind us that a few years, oh, sorry, a few months back, when we ran into a whole bunch of limestone during excavation, we had a major change order for that, I said, "We're gonna probably run into additional limestone when we do excavation for utilities, but it won't be anything like the other because we're only digging three feet into the ground." So that process has started. I expect we're gonna have some additional costs because we're gonna come across some rock. So we'll have an update on that in another month or so, but again, we really don't expect anything as significant as the last one. We've got a pair of change orders coming in the next month, very likely. These are specific to the reinforced glass wall and the power to the automatic doors. These are also gonna be relatively minor in terms of change of cost. We continue to meet every other Thursday at the site. That's our regular location now. Gives us a chance to walk the grounds, get some information both from our general contractor and our architects on every step of the process. Of course, we learn a whole lot by doing that, and it also makes it more real. So we will continue to be doing that. And then, as we inch closer to the substantial completion date for the building, we're gonna look forward to discussing some possible VIP tours for staff, trustees, friends of the library, and community partners as we gear up toward a big promotional grand opening in May of next year. So everything is still going on track.
I have a question for you. I believe the last time we met, there was a question about the landscaping.
Yes, that has been resolved.
Do we have an update?
Thankfully, yes.
Good.
And painlessly.
Okay, good.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, next, we will review a request for a proposal for the employee compensation study. This is an action item, so do I have a motion to approve the request for proposal?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Greer will fill us in on what that involves.
Okay, we're very excited to reach this important stage and to present the draft RFP for the 2022 compensation study. Having discussed the compensation philosophy for the library and strategic goals for making changes to our current plan, this RFP outlines the scope of work expected for this study, which includes a review of the library's structure and current compensation plan, staff feedback on cost of living experiences and related factors informing job satisfaction and employee retention, wage schedule and benefits comparisons with regional, county, and citywide peer employers, and some written recommendations for updating the library's current compensation plan. We have intentionally focused this RFP on the nuts and bolts of the process rather than any specific strategic goals of updating our compensation plan. Those strategic goals and discussions, which will ultimately reflect our compensation philosophy and institutional values, will be informed not only by the results of the study, but also by staff, administration, and trustee input over the course of the next several months. Our legal team has reviewed and assisted in preparing the draft, and we're looking to publish this RFP as early as tomorrow, with a turnaround date of August 5th, and an approved vendor contract to bring to you at the August 17th Board Meeting. Discussions we've had with some of our peer organizations presently conducting similar studies, and that includes public libraries in Indiana, has given us insight into the process, and preliminary discussions with some potential vendors have also confirmed that our goal of completing the study and proposing changes to our compensation plan by the end of this year is indeed realistic. So tonight, we seek your approval of the draft RFP for the 2022 compensation study in order to proceed with next steps.
Are there any questions or comments before we vote? All in favor of approving the request for proposal for the employee compensation study signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Okay, and now we'll move on to new business, and we're gonna just hear a draft budget for the 2023 fiscal year from Gary.
So very quickly, I'll just say that we have shared this draft 23 budget with you all a couple of times now, just for good measure, and Gary tonight's gonna discuss the overview and talk about the next steps in the annual budget preparation process, and of course, and answer any questions you have. As we said before, please note that the summary document for this draft budget is very important because it touches on something of a strategic shift with regard to the use of operating surplus going forward. So Gary, take it away.
So tonight, we take our first look at the 2023 budget, and then next month at the August meeting, the budget, along with any changes, will come back to the board for review, and we will request, we will have a request to approve the public advertisement next month. So after the taxpayers have had a chance to see the public notice on the budget, which will have the dates for the public hearing and everything, then we will have the public hearing September 21st at the September meeting. So the library's financial picture for 2023 is looking good. Monroe County will see a major library service expansion when the new Southwest branch opens, and at this point, the new branch is expected open in May of 2023. So looking at the revenue side of the budget, the total estimated revenue for the library in 2023 is about $11.6 million, and that's where we're at. The 2023 operating fund revenue will be about $10.7 million. The property tax levy will account for about $7.4 million of the operating fund revenue. The property tax levy has increased, or will increase, by 5% from 2022. The 5% increase is based on the growth quotient, which is the average increase in personal income for Indiana residents over a six-year period. The five-year increase in the property tax levy amounts to about $350,000. For local income tax, which is here, the Bloomington City Council recently increased the local income tax rate from 1.345% to 2.035%, so it's gone up 0.69%. We've estimated $2.8 million next year for local income tax. And so moving to the spending side of the budget, the 2023 budget provides for increased operations costs associated with the expansion of service at the Southwest location. The funds to cover the 2023 operational cost increases are made possible by the explosive growth in library revenue over the past 10 years. The rate of increase in property assessed value seems to be snowballing, along with the growth quotient, which determines the rate of increase in the library's property tax revenue. The revenue and assessed value growth over the past 10 years has financed the Southwest branch construction, the renovation and expansion of the Ellisville branch, and the renovation of the main library branch. All of this service expansion, and the tax rate has decreased. The tax rate fell from 10.97% or cents per hundred dollars assessed value in 2011 to 9.25 cents in 2022. So this is a new report, operation or operating surplus analysis, and I prepared this report to show the trends in the major categories of operating revenue and operating cost. It shows the trend in assessed value and growth quotient also. So looking at the assessed value up here, for 2022, we were about eight, at $8.36 billion. This report shows an estimate, an estimated increase to $8.5 billion in 2023. That's a low estimate, I think. A 5% increase would put us at $8.78 billion, and so I think we could be in that range of 8.5 to near 8.8 billion. Getting close to the $9 billion mark, and at $9 billion, for every one penny tax per hundred dollars of assessed value, it generates $900,000 of revenue. The library tax rate for 2022, and that's right here, is 9.25 cents per hundred dollars of assessed The property tax levy for the library is determined by the gross growth quotient, and based on data for personal income of residents in Indiana, the average increase for the last six years has been 5%. And that's a huge number when we put that in the context of where we've been. So here is the line for the growth quotient, and so we can see an estimate for 2023 of 5%, whereas back in 2016, we were at 2.6%. So steadily increase, 2.6, 3.8, and we get into the fours, and now we're at 5. I think that's a peak. I think, based on, I've looked at the first quarter of this year compared to last year, and it's down, but my, I think that it's likely we'll be in the 4% range next year or the year after. That's still a very healthy increase compared to 2.6 and 3, which is So looking at the revenue trend, so right this line is total operating revenue, and we can see that in 2016, total operating revenue was about $8.3 billion. And when we look at 2021, it's gone up by a little over $2 billion. But when we look at the total operating expense line, so this line here, we see that in 2016, we were at about $7.5 million in operating expense, and 2021, at about $8.5 million. So for that period of time, the operating revenue went up by about twice as much as the operating expense, and that's why we can expand service like we have. So for the balance of this year, 2022, I'm estimating that we will end up with a surplus, an operating surplus of at least $1 million. And then, for 2023, as our branch operation costs kick in, I'm estimating at this point that we will still have a surplus. It'll be less. I'm estimating around $600,000, but for 2023, I'm still estimating that we should have an operating surplus. So at this point, I'm gonna open it up for questions.
Is there anything that's happened legislatively that would change what you do, or what you can or cannot do with an operating surplus?
No. To my knowledge, there's been no major change on what we can do with operating One change I did notice was that the amount of operating fund surplus that can be transferred to the rainy day fund in the past has been limited to 10%, and that has gone up to 15%. Any other questions?
When it comes to operating expenses, how are the increases that we're seeing, like in gas costs for the bookmobiles and all that, and even just utilities? I know I saw a big jump in my gas bill last month that I was a little taken aback by. How is that impacting our operating expenses? And how do you foresee it impacting those?
To provide for those, I've tried to overestimate or build in enough cushion into the budget numbers, so that even if we get some surprises, and we know, we already know, like you said, that some of the items are going up, but we've built enough cushion into it that we should be well-covered.
Okay. Good to know. Any other questions or comments for Gary? Okay, thank you, Gary. We appreciate it. All right, next up, we have our department presentation, which will be from the Information Technology Department, and that will be given by Ned Baugh.
Hi, I'm Ned Baugh. I'm the IT Department Manager. I'm giving an update on the IT Department. We're a relatively small department, which means each of us is responsible for a range of things. I'm gonna go through my staff just to introduce them. My staff include Paula Gray Overtum, our web administrator, Vanessa Schwegman, our Polaris and Phone System Administrator, Cody Mullis, our network administrator, and Henry Tref, our tech support. Together, we support the library staff and patrons in all things technical. I last presented to the board in September of 2021, so I have a couple updates since then that I'd like to go over with you. The first is our move to a new vendor for time and print management software. This is the second one, so there's nothing to look at related to this now, but time and print management for the public machines is how we manage patron time on the computers and give them access to the printers. And we've moved to a vendor, a new vendor this year in February that allows us to take credit card payments for printing, and also allows people to send print jobs over the Wi-Fi or even from home. So if you go to print.mcl.info, you can send a job directly to our system and then come into the library to pick it up. And that's kind of a neat feature that we've wanted to have for a while. Before that, we had to tell patrons to come and sit down at a computer to print something out, so that's a nice change. And I'm gonna give that one kind of short shrift. That was a big project for us, but the bigger project that I want to go into more detail about is Happio. This is our new Happio Intranet. This is something the board approved last year, so hopefully it rings a bell, but I'll refresh everybody's memory about this. And in, just as an overview, I'm not sure if everyone here is familiar with an Intranet. Just in case you're not, you can think of an Intranet as an internal website for staff. Like, our public website is for patrons to use and to get information about the library. The Intranet is a tool for staff to use to facilitate communication, to store information, and to help with collaboration. It works alongside email and Google Drive and things like that, but it's really a standalone technology to help sort of organize and facilitate that. So one of the items that grew out of our continuous improvement process was a need to improve communication in our organization, and this included revamping our Intranet. We were already using Google Workspace in various ways, but we wanted to take better advantage of that and to do that in a way that was intuitive for staff to use. Sorry, I'm going to sleep here. And at the end of 2020, we started looking at different options to do that. And then in 2021, as part of continuous improvement, we formed a team to evaluate different solutions and set up demos with a couple of vendors for Intranet solutions. That team included staff from different areas in the library, and after evaluation and discussion, our team unanimously decided to go with Happio. And from our report, I'll just quote, "That we thought Happio was the best solution for the library due to its intuitive user interface, its simple three-tiered architecture, its dynamic and familiar communication capabilities, simple search functionality, and complete Google integration." And I'm gonna show you what that looks like in just a minute. But to continue with the timeline, the board approved purchase in September of 2021, and then we formed a new team to put Happio in place. And this was a broader team made up of staff from the original evaluation team, but also included more people throughout the building. And we tasked them with the actual building of the site. So that gave more staff a chance to become familiar with it as we went live or before we went live. And as we moved closer to our official go-live date, we added more and more staff to it on a beta process so that we could have them try it out, have them test it, give us feedback, and then incorporate some of that feedback. So our beta launch was in late March, and by the time we went live with the site, over half the staff had had a chance to try it out and provide feedback. So in many ways, it was a soft launch when we officially went live on April 12th. As I mentioned, one of the, one key attraction was the ease with which staff were able to get up and running with it. As part of the evaluation process, we had an installation of the software that our team could use, and we immediately found it really easy to build pages and have conversations using the built-in tools, the channels, without a lot of training. It was easy to just dive in and start using it. So Happio also connects to our Google Workspace. As you can see up in the corner here, that's my smiling face looking back, and that shows that I'm authenticated to it, and that's going through my Google account. It also integrates nicely with Google Drive, so that information stored in Drive can be easily organized and shared in Happio. And it uses channels to allow staff to respond to postings and comments in a way that's easily searchable, making it less likely that information will be lost in an email thread. Cody Mullis serves as the Happio administrator, but we all in IT act as support for staff using it. And more importantly, and this was kind of a key philosophy, we're focusing on giving staff the tools to use this so that they can build it themselves as opposed to having to request IT to build something for them. And so far, that's been the case. I think the staff that have worked on this would tell you. that they were pretty excited to be able to do this on their own. There are occasional things where we have to help somebody with a complicated Google form or that sort of thing. But for the most part, this is in the hands of staff to build themselves. Let's see. And we've also created a Happio steering team to help guide the management and best practices for the new tool. And as we move forward, the last thing I'll say is we'll be looking to the analytics that are built into this to learn more about what is working and where we can further improve it. For instance, we can see that we've had over 100 unique users login every month since we launched. So that's 100 staff on a regular basis who are using this regularly. I don't know if it's the same 100 staff. You know, I assume that we're just, some are falling through the cracks. But that's a pretty good percentage of our staff. And we can see which pages and channels are viewed most often and which generate the most response. Because we're pretty early in our implementation, we're still sort of building a baseline. So I can show you some of the analytics, but I think it's still pretty fresh. I think in the next month or so, we'll be able to look back and see if we're actually seeing a trend. But so far, it looks like we're getting a lot of staff interaction with it. And let's see, and then searching. So I'm going to, I'm going to show you a couple things. This is the homepage for it. And I'm not going to drill down into too much of this. But the three main parts of it are people, pages, and channels. So the people aspect of it is pulling information from our Google directory. But if I type in, say, Greer and pull up Greer's information, this pulls up information that is similar to what you'd see if you were searching somebody in contacts in Google. You can see that he's been with us for four years. But it also puts this in a nice format, an organizational chart. And I could get this by going through the sidebar as well. But I'm going to open this up just to give you an idea of what this looks like. So this is a chart that I can move around in. I can drill down on different managers and get to see who's in their department. So if I had pulled up, say, Vanessa in my department, it would have immediately shown that she was in IT and reports to me, who in turn reports to Greer. And I can change the formatting of that a little bit. But this is something, most importantly, this isn't something that we have to build on the fly. This is something that is auto-generated from our directory. Pages, and I guess I should say too, as I'm clicking up here, that's bringing up this sidebar. But you could also navigate through the links on the page as well. Pages are what you might think of as sort of static web pages, what you think of when you think of a typical page that has departments that you're going to click through and drill down into. So if we wanted to, say, go to the IT page, this would give us some information about the IT department, show some latest posts from our feed, has a link to our help form, has some information pages. So this is where we would store a lot of information that isn't static necessarily, but isn't something that would be in an email or a channel post. And those are things that we had had in the past. I think the biggest change, or one of the biggest changes, is channels. We could access these on the homepage too. This feed is coming from channels. But channels are feeds that staff can subscribe to. They are either just for the internal department to use. We have a few channels that departments use internally and aren't meant to be communication with the entire library. But the ones that are showing up here are ones that are meant to be information throughout the library that would be accessible. So you don't have to subscribe to the building services feed. But if you're interested, this is where building services post updates, like the buffing of the polar bears.
Can I ask a quick question about the channels? Who has the ability to post to the channels?
Great question. So the, the channel is open to people in that group. So, or let me back up a step.
Anyone in building services could put on information to the building services channel?
Yes. And it's giving me the right post because I have administrative access to it. But I guess more importantly, what I would say is that that's something we can control. We can make a channel so that only the people who are considered the owners of the channel can post to it, and other people can leave comments. Or we can make it so that anyone can post to it. Or we can make it so that only certain people can post and people can't leave comments. That's all, we can configure that ourselves. Yeah, let me get into, I guess, the MCL announcements would be sort of a general purpose one. And so we've been trying to use this to take the place of email notifications. We used to send out all-staff notifications via email. This puts it in a place where, and I'm not, where if there are comments related to it, they're posted in a place where everyone can see it. And that's, it's not a huge breakthrough. You know, everyone is familiar with commenting on posts and seeing that sort of thing. But for an organization, it's nice because that sort of back and forth may have happened in email in the past. A new employee comes a month later, they don't have any access to that. And it's easier for multiple people to see it. People can participate in it as much as they want. But for something like MCL announcements, that shows up in everybody's page. And then the other couple things I'll point out here.
Real fast, Ned, if I could. Jamie, your question. So MCL announcements is something that we manage in administration, and we're the only ones who really post. But then we have a channel called Footnotes where all staff can post. And the idea with that is that it's about kind of anything you want. It can be fun whimsical stuff. It can be library-specific stuff or, you know, local stuff or whatever it is. And so there's, with a channel like Footnotes, it's more of the organic social media back and forth that you expect. But we're careful and, I would say, constructive about how we set those permissions for different channels. And we also give department managers the freedom to determine how they want to manage their own channels, if they want it to be an internal tool just within the department or they want it to be staff-wide notifications about goings-on in that particular department. It kind of depends on their individual needs. So it's kind of granular.
Yeah, I was going to say that the Footnotes one was one we decided that wasn't going to be related to a specific department. So it is more of a wide-open announcements or sometimes silly, sometimes fun, places for people to post things that aren't related to their job functions or procedures, that sort of thing. And yeah, so the last two things I was going to show you and then I'll answer any other questions. You have, there are bookmarks and there's the Launcher. Bookmarks is just a place for staff to save their own links if there's something that they want to have readily accessible. It's not that much different than bookmarks in a browser, but it's a way to save it in Happio. The Launcher is similar to that except that these are all links to applications that we set up so that everybody who works at MCL has access, say, to UltiPro or they could use this link to log into Polaris. These aren't ones that staff can add to. If they request it, we can add one. But these are basically all links that we think staff will need to have access to. And it puts it in a handy place. And then if they want, they can go through and just select favorites to show so they're not seeing the whole list if there's only a few that they actually use. And then we have several options for notifications. I won't go into all the different options there, but this basically shows you when someone has posted something new to a channel. And it can take you straight to that post. So it's been a few months, but the level of activity has been really gratifying. Yeah, I think, I am curious to see in the next, in the next couple of months what we can do with the analytics, particularly, oh, I'm sorry. The last thing, the big, the other big thing I wanted to show you is search. I thought of that because I was thinking, we'll be able to look at search results. But I didn't go over search. Okay, so the search menu here, when I do a search here, this is going through and searching everything that's in the Happio website. But it has these categories here. I'm going to go ahead and open up these search results so it's a little easier to see. This is searching basically everything that I, as a Google user, have access to. So the category of pages refers to search results within Happio pages. I could also search for posts within Happio channels. I can search for people. I'm not getting good results there. But the thing that we thought was really powerful is when I click on files, this is searching my files in Google Drive. And so if I have access to it, say it's a procedure for circulation. If it's stored in Google Drive, I don't need to get out of Happio, go to Google Drive and search for it there. I can search for it here and be searching through the Happio pages and through Google Drive simultaneously. And that was a feature that was really impressive to us. One of the things we had run into in the past was having things stored in different places and not knowing whether we needed to look on a particular network drive or in a certain app. This pulls it all together in one place and hopefully makes it easier for staff to find things. And that, I think, is everything that I wanted to go over. But I'm happy to dig deeper or answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Ned? Well, Ned, thank you so much for that informative presentation. And it was nice to see how the staff is using Happio and that it's been a good purchase and been an asset to the, to the staff communication.
Thank you.
Okay, we've now reached the time in our meeting for public comment. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to step forward and address the board? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? The ayes have it, we are adjourned. Thank you.